Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting. We have a special meeting this evening. It is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. We are calling the meeting order at 6:32 PM. You are welcome to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to begin our meeting.
I'm glad to be just to be a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand one nation under God invisible, purity and justice.
We would like to open it up to present to speak and can you share the state your name and address for the record? You will have five minutes to share your thoughts. We also will have a present to speak opportunity at the end of our meeting this evening. So if you're in person or online, you can raise your hand or. Not yet. Okay, we'll check back in towards the end. Thank you. Okay, this evening, we are excited to have Rusty Malik, Becca Booth, and Michael Lane from QA and M Architecture. They've been working hard with us for quite some time now to talk about our school buildings and help us come up with some solutions and ideas about how to best care for our facilities. And it sounds like because of this recent special legislation, you've taken another look for us and perhaps some updates. So looking forward to hearing about that. Did you want to kick it off?
No, it's all them. We've been going back and forth and this is their show tonight.
Wonderful. Thanks for inviting us to your show.
This presentation will be online for public tomorrow. It'll be on the website. Sorry, I will say something at the start of this, sorry. On the front page of the Board of Education, you know, our website. Right when you scroll down, it has the July top three V O E. It has your last presentation that is there. And this will be right underneath it with the new date. So everything that's being projected tonight will be online tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. And we have some good information and some exciting new information for that hopefully help your project. Obviously, the goals have not changed. I mean, the goal is to have better education for the students of Wellington. Pre-K through eight, athletic facilities to help, you know, help them learn and 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 just make it a more viable area, place for students to be in. In the in the past presentations, we talked about capital improvement projects. We also looked at many of these options that we are, we're discussing today. But there are a few things that have changed and what we're going to do is just talk about them. I'm also going to, you know, just highlight a few other items that I think are important for the board to know. In terms of new legislation that has been approved. And these are items that you may want to pursue, you may not. I know that we're working with other districts who are pursuing some additional reimbursement. Now, you've been lucky enough to get a 15% boost on on your reimbursement rate. See, this year's rate is sixty, sixty-four point six four and was and last year was a point lower, actually. And by the time you apply, so depending on when your application goes in, that's the the rate that will apply. So with the 15% that you received, you're at now seventy-nine point six four in terms of a general reimbursement rate. And just if if you recall, that's the general reimbursement rate applies to general construction and, yeah, you know, code updates and those types of projects. If you build a new building, it's it's a negative 10%. So instead of seventy-nine point six four, it'll be a sixty-nine point six four reimbursement rate for for new buildings. And and even that, from what we understand, is something that we can, if we can have discussion with the state, with the commissioner about depending on your project type. And, you know, to say, look, it makes more sense to have a a new building. And if that, if you're able to convince them, then then I, you know, projects that receive the full full rate. But going beyond that, in terms of just legislation that has been approved. One of the things that that's caught our eye is that in elementary school projects, you know, this particular language is in there as an amendment. So basically, what what the language is saying that if you have a early childhood care facility or is accommodated within your elementary school, that there's a boost of 15%. How that applies to your, the the boost that you've received, the 15% increase you've received is something that we would have to discuss with with the commissioner. In the case of another district that we're working with, they didn't get the increase. They got some other legislation. But we're going to be discussing that with the commissioner hopefully in the next month or so. So that's just something for you to be aware of. I think it's important to try and take advantage of whatever you can get. You know, because the language says as long as it doesn't exceed 100%, well, 100% would be great. But in your case, let's say you were able to negotiate with 15%, it would make a big difference to to what the net cost of the town would be. The other part of this legislation also revolves around special education. There's another 15%. This is a little bit bit more, it's not as straightforward in my mind. But there's a boost of 15% if you're able to demonstrate that your community's special education needs within that school. Most schools do that anyway. And if you pick a program, you house your special education students within the district. And there's language to that effect. So that's something that we could look at and see if any of that applies to you. And if it does, then we can again have more discussion about how we implement it. In this particular case, I'm I'm the way I'm reading it, and again, you know, the final interpretation of the commission's office is that it would be just the space that's pertinent to special education. So wherever it takes, I mean, if it's a few percentage points as a result of that, that's fine. You know, I think it's something that needs to be explored.
I just have a couple of questions. Are we, do we interrupt some questions we have? You want us to say it to the end?
I think, you know, as long as you want, I mean, I think it's okay to interrupt me. I think here that you'll derail my presentation.
About these sections, are these new, these two that you highlighted?
These are just issue, yes. In fact, I brought the 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 legislation that was approved this past June. So this is in there. Another piece of legislation that's out there that this becomes, this they could be an impact. In fact, there would be an impact on your project in this particular case. As it currently stands, the the state has a limit in terms of construction cost, but they've really never followed through line in terms of the cost per square foot. But now they've come come up with a plan that shows the cost per square foot. And what you'll notice is that there's, you know, $694 a square foot for elementary, I mean, for K, um, elementary K through five, $520 a square foot for six through eight and and $523 for nine and 12. The way this impacts you is that there's additional language about this. Is that anything above that becomes ineligible. Now, the reality is, as I'm looking at all the budgets and all the schools that we're doing, in fact, we're right now in the process of designing another elementary school, pre-K through five. Those numbers far exceed the the numbers that you do sort of move back to us. So the 494 is not a number that, I mean, it'd be very hard to achieve, and you're probably not going to achieve it simply because you're also now not talking about today's dollars, you're talking about dollars, you know, two to three years from now. So that's important. But what what happens here and the reason I'm bringing to your attention that if it's, it applies opt to July 1st, 2026. So if you're able to get your application in June 30th of 2026, which is before the the deadline, then, you know, you don't have to worry about that aspect of the of this legislation. So I would encourage that you can, you can, you can, don't have to wait till June 30th. You can apply anytime during the year for that. But if you go through that process and then you decide on a project, moving into an application before, you know, by June 30th of 2026 is extremely important.
This is the point that I said I needed more information out to you. And now, I understand it. There's a lot of dollars there. I mean, we talked about the difference in square footage for K5, going from 494 to what currently is and what your building is.
It's about 550 and or and more in some cases.
So, I mean, per square foot, it's it's a lot of money. And it's something that we hadn't had that discussion before. That this is the point that he had brought up to me a couple of times and said I need more. This is it.
And and the the reality is that the smaller the project, you don't have the economy of scale. So that also impacts you.
So have the numbers gone up? There's more than there used to be? There's?
And in construction, what we're seeing and our numbers are going, continue to go up.
Okay, no, I mean, in terms of this per square foot per student or cost per?
It follow, right? Yeah, just did.
There was, there was always a a number there. But depending on your project, the way that number was sort of farce is that it was $365 a square foot was the number that was there previously. But but there were a lot of exclusions from it, and there was not language that said, okay, it'll be ineligible. So this, I think they've they've increased the cost per square foot, but the intention is to really stand by this number and say you're going to be ineligible. And you can build what you want, but it'd be ineligible.
Rusty, was that an OSCGR number or was that statutory?
This is.
This is statutory. Was the old number statutory?
Was also, it was a number that was put out by the state in the renovation status. So, yeah, so it would have been statutory.
Okay.
So this is different from the amount of square footage per student?
Yes.
Okay, this, has that changed at all or is that the same?
So this is tied to the the square foot per student. So your calculation now is okay, your space standard, and that's what they will, you know, that that's how they apply the cost per square foot. So if you buy space standards, so you're at, say, X number of square feet, that times the 494 for an elementary school would be the eligible component of construction. Anything above that would be ineligible. So and and exactly how this is going to work out at the end, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be more discussion about it. But this is, you know, this has been issued and, and, you know, we were, this information was sent to us and so we want to make sure that everybody is aware.
I don't know if my math is right, but I just want to put a perspective. If we're talking about 60,000 square feet and we're talking about additional $56 per square foot, it's in a 3 million. It's not small money. It's.
No, you know, keep in mind that when we talk about building costs, this is based on building costs, not. So what happens if you got site costs, those are outside of that that number. And and there's always a discussion about what's outside that number and what's going to be in that number. I think in general, that there's probably a move to sort of being rigid about these numbers and to, you know, reveal control in the cost per square foot. So that's something that's ongoing and you need to be aware of. So just going back to the project itself, I mean, we we looked at the capital improvement project. We looked at, you know, renovation at at Hall as as a renovator's new school and at Center as a renovator's new school. We also looked in the past with Paul being a pre-K, a renovator's new school, and we looked at a new school. So much of what we've looked at, you know, is is still there, that that data. So what what are we doing here today? Is a three, and I call them option A, B, and C. So option A is updated information on a new school, on a new, at a new site. The site is yet to be selected. So as we go through this process and you start looking at numbers, I don't know what the cost of the of the land is going to be. We have, there are guidelines for what the state will require in terms of the selection of the site. They actually have an approval process for the site, including appraisals and so on. Just so that, you know, for the purpose of budgeting, I I just put a million dollar allowance in there because we're looking at about a 25 acre plus. Our slope, 25 usable acres in that range. Is that what we'd be looking for on a site? So that's the new school on a on a new site option. The other option we were going to look at is there a new school on the Hall site. Now, that's something we did not look at previously. So how can we fit a new pre-K age school on on the Hall site? And then the, and then the third one is going back to a pre-K age as a renovator's new at the Hall site and, you know, what are the implications? Just as a, something that I want to bring to your attention as well, is some of the things that have changed in the last iteration. We were looking at an enrollment of 431 students and now we're at 411. And if you go further, you know, into your window of enrollment, that starts to drop some more. So I think you're the next number. So your population is is fairly steady, but it's just up and down by a few students. But every student that you decrease by is square footage that you're not able to build or it's not part of, you know, you're outside of your space standard. And the reason that's important is because you fall into that small school category, which it's very difficult. If I'm going to build a smaller gym, you know, I'm going to, you know, the thousands have to be the size of they need to be. So all those spaces need to be there, even though the space standards give you a little bit more square footage for, you know, when you're of a smaller enrollment. It, you know, we're at a point where, and and we had this issue in Stonington, where the numbers are so small enough, they are so small that it's very difficult to achieve educational program requirements and especially special education requirements, et cetera, in that space standard that's been established. So those are a few things that have changed since the last time we had conversations about these projects. So we'll start with, you know, the new building, where I'm finding option A, new building on a new site. That will be somewhere in in town. As a new building, again, we're going by the 411 students as as the enrollment count. We're going by the sixty-four point six four, which is the 2025 reimbursement. And we know that there's a 50% add to that. So, you know, sixty-nine point six four. I'm sorry, seventy-nine point six four. But because it's, this is a new building, we're will be at sixty-nine point six four in terms of the reimbursement rate. As we move through this process, in order to really look at a new school, you need to have a site. So one of the first things that you need to do is go through a site selection process. And we've gone through this with many other districts with the boards that, you know, that we've helped them find and identify the sites, these criteria in terms of central location, appropriate usable acreage, because you can have a lot of acreage, but if it's a steep slope or it's wetlands, it doesn't really do anything for you. So and and look, I mean, for for Vision Eight, even, we looked at like 20 different sites and, you know, we would bring up, we had this criteria, and this is very similar to the criteria that the state looks for as well. And and they will ask you that, have you gone through this process? And at the end of the day, then you provide them that information and they will then come and visit the site themselves to make sure it needs to be centrally located. As I said, if there are any water sources you need to identify, then the soils are important because for you, we're talking septic here. Utilities are important because you're going to make sure that the power is, you know, is readily available. The more, if if it's got to be brought over from the greater distance or if it's on off-site work, anything that's off-site is ineligible for for reimbursement. So you want to have a site where everything is right there. Because any cost that you you incur for off-site work, it will be ineligible for construction. So that's, that's very important. And, you know, quite frankly, there's a schedule in fact. I mean, you have to get, you know, purchased land, put a concept together to move forward with with that. And it doesn't take a long time. You just have to identify parcels. Identify all the criteria that we've shown you here to say, okay, let's look at all these. And ultimately, there's a cost to the price and and the appraisals, and that part of it usually is done sort of an executive session, but you don't want it to be, you know, a a public session. And because of just negotiations that may occur for the purchase of the site. So new school, new site, the first step would be going through and selecting a site. Now, this is an image that we we shared previously. What's important here really is more about what are we building? How much can we build? We were building a much larger building in in the last few designs. And what we've done here is that what is our eligible space standard based square footage? And that's what we're going to try to work towards now. Looked at the previous educational program that you had, we took out the auditorium, we, you know, obviously, those are as we've we've looked at really some of the spaces and tried to see how we can bring that square footage down. Ideally, your square footage is, needs to be around seventy-two, I believe, at least.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, but what we're, what we're looking at here for the sake of our budgeting and understanding of the of the program, we're we're in the you know, allowable area, which is 60,800 and change is what these budgets are based on. So when we look at budgets and you see, oh, look, the prices come down on the project, there's a reason why it came down because we're building less than what we were building before. And and even though the cost went up. So those are some of the criteria that we're we're looking at in in this. Now, if you were to say, you know what, we're going to seek a a space standard waiver for this, then, you know, then we could get that additional, you know, three to 5,000 square feet, and the cost will go up, but your reimbursement, you know, would not be affected. If you built that additional square footage without a space standard waiver, what I calculated, it it reduces that the sixty-nine to sixty-eight point, sixty-six point eight eight. So there's an impact of building more than that space standard. Which which we discussed the last time around as well, as we build more. So this is where the space standard issue will come up and, you know, we'll talk about it again and some of the other options as well. We did put a schedule together and these schedules anticipate that you would apply for the grant and and have the the grant application in by June 30th of of 2026. Now, you can choose to go earlier than that with your application, but there, basically, the deadline is June 30th, 2026 for the next next group. I will say that many districts have been able to apply even after the fact. For instance, a district we're working with had missed the deadline of June 30th. But they got special legislation to allow them to submit their grant. And at that time, it was October or so, and retro actually have it applied to the June, I mean, to the 2025 June deadline. So there's a lot of things that can be done legislatively, you know. I know that the stakeholders don't like to do that. These are, this is all special legislation. And and, you know, so it's a a matter of, you know, where you want to be. I think the best approach would be to meet that deadline and then you're not really worrying about, you know, what happens and whether that legislation would be approved. It's very, I mean, I've very frequently has any legislation like that not been approved. I'm I'm aware of that. I'm not aware of any in fact. But, you know, that's in fact, even in this latest approval, you can see there's a whole list of people that have got approvals based on various different criteria and items still there. In this scenario, I mean, you need to understand that when you apply for your grant application, the funding actually is approved the following, following July. But actually, the decision on that, the grant package is made in between the November to January timeframe where everybody's applications have been evaluated. They they're included in the in the grant list there that that gets it out. And so you're pretty well certain. And and, you know, when you get ready to apply for the application is the state and the O G A likes to have some discussions with you on what your project is, et cetera. And they'll tell you right away if it's, it's something that's not going to get approved. Nothing that you have isn't falls into that category. So you know, it's it's very typical and I think that there's no reason to doubt that this would be approved. The importance here and the reason I'm going through this step is these schedules have been developed so that after you put your grant application in, that you go into your design process, because that's a year-long process. Now, that that does, you know, in fact, frankly, puts you at sort of at risk. So if somebody would just say, oh, you're at risk because the money technically is not approved. Well, you've gone through the referendum process to put money. So, you know, you have the money, but the state's portion of that money has technically not been approved to that turn. But what you need to be aware of is if you don't move forward, then you delay another year. If you think of the escalation that that you're going to encounter and for that additional year, you're actually coming out way ahead by by moving forward with the project itself in that timeframe. And that's why we developed this. You could certainly say, no, we don't want to do this. We don't wait till the following June and then start process. It just puts you a year out further. And, you know, we're we're using 5% right now roughly as an escalation back from annual basis. And and we can't really predict. I mean, there's a lot of things that are happening in the economy that, you know, we don't really have a crystal ball. We rely on, on, you know, a lot of construction managers and estimators that we work with all the time. So the data that we've created here is is based on, you know, some fairly recent bids and estimates that we have received. But as you can see with this process, it's about a two-year, you know, it'll be roughly a two-year window for construction. The goal is to have the schools completed in the summer months so that you move in in that August of that of 2029 as as I'm showing on this schedule. And the students are in. So, you know, there's a a closeout and furniture and all that stuff happens in the summer. So July, August, that would happen. And then September, students would actually be in the building. Teachers would be and everybody would be in the building. So that's the, you know, the schedule here. In new construction, depending on how, you know, what the site is all about and what we're we're dealing with, that window could be shorter. Which is actually good. I mean, it's not going to be short enough to do to say we'll do it in a year. But, you know, we we're more assured that everything will be done by that following summer.
Rusty, the, I just want to clarify something. I think some people are going to hear this and or and see this and say special legislation, we have 18 months to make a decision. This is why I said that July one legislation that he mentioned about square footage was so important. All of your timelines now are applications in June of 2026. That is really great. All of them are are that. And for the reason of, you're going to spend millions more, I would say is a fair statement. If you are after that or and you are not able to backdate. So when we talked about, hey, 18 months, we've got to get moving, that's why this is so important. That so all the timelines that he has established here, it doesn't matter the project, right? That the timeline starts where the application is in June of 26 for that purpose.
And your legislation, the 15% increase also has, you know, I think it's.
That's the 18 months that they were talking about, correct? Yeah, yeah.
And so you you would lose that as well. So in that case, you're really.
Where do you see the referendum on this timeline?
The the referendum could happen really anytime. Once you've selected your project. If it's a new project, let's say, and it takes you a few months to find the site. Then we go through a concept design phase and a grant application. You need to go through that so that you can establish a budget. And then once that's done, you go out to to a referendum. I don't think at this point you can meet the November timeframe. I think you're. I don't think at this point you can meet the November timeframe. I think you're probably in the in the spring. And the reason I say the spring is because it gives you the option of, you know, your June thirtieth is your your deadline there. Now, having said that, as as I said, there are communities where they've actually gone out to for the funding. After the June thirtieth deadline. It would impact this project because you would have to wait to any design work or anything because you wouldn't really technically have the money. But in 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 that scenario, you could go in in November. I don't, as long as your application is approved and there are additional. Is it some additional documents that you would have to provide the state if that would be the case? But you have enough time on this project to be able to really make. And go out and do it, the due diligence and present it to the to the public for approval.
And it has to pass the referendum before it goes, the application goes to.
No, you don't. You you can get your application in that square, but with the application, you have to make, you know, they're. They will look for the documentation that says we're going out to a referendum. Let's say you were. Going to reference that for some reason that July, and you don't want to do it in the summer, but let's say that was a timeframe. The letter would say, yeah, we've got everything worked out that the actual date of the referendum is July. You know, and and as long as you have that information, you you will be allowed to submit your grant application.
Rossy, the big thing, I think, for the community was knowing the number. So once the state has a project approved and they tell you. Hey, this is your percentage reimbursement based on the project you've submitted in June. If their timeframe of approval is November to January. If they approve in January. That is really when this, the the town would have the number and then they could do. Like, I remember reading there was a town that had they had like whatever it was, four months, so making that up, three months to pass a referendum. Once they got their number. That just throws off your timeline because you can't do design if you do that group. It does allow the town to know what the natural numbers. Is that correct?
Right, what, yes, that's correct, but what would happen is. You really, let's say you put in in your application in June and you're going to wait till November for the the vote on that. Then that's, once you put the number, you will know what your number is. Based on the the application that you submit, you have to have that application number in at that.
Got you, got you. So they, it's not, they won't change that. They're not.
Change the cost of your project, what they will, you know, and and we will have. That's why I said, you know, having a discussion with the state, like something like getting the early childhood additional credit. Except I would suggest that you get that, you know, you have that discussion early in this process. So that you know going in what could be committed to.
Same thing with the space then.
Space standards, exactly.
I also feel like we have a better idea what our reimbursement number is this time around. I think that was the problem last time was we really didn't know. We couldn't tell the voters what we would be reimbursed for. And I think that I I feel much that more confident this time that we are more secure about our reimbursement numbers.
Well, you've got that the legislation that that's sort of locking in the additional fifteen percent. And you know what your current rate is. So, you know, that that gives you a a pretty, a number that you can be fairly confident about. Remember, your reimbursement rate and and is not, I mean, when you, when we calculate reimbursement. We always say there's there's going to be something ineligible costs. So we factor in one and a half to two percent as ineligible. Even though we may not know exactly what it is right now, but there'll be some items, let's say there's some offsite work that's required on a new building. So we will factor that in. Initially, when you file your your grant, you have to say that contingencies are ineligible. It's it's just the way they they set it up and then the reason they do that, they say your contingency is ineligible. So when you file your grant application, all of a sudden you're saying, wait a minute, I've got a three million dollar contingency. And that became ineligible. The reality is, and it says that right in in the in the documentation, that. As you expend that contingency, it becomes eligible. So if you were to spend two million of that contingency and it's eligible, then they. Every time you do that, you make it, the contingencies are for change orders, right? So if there's a change order and it's ineligible change order, it becomes eligible for reimbursement. That's the process that's been the way it is and, you know, never had an issue with that. Now, if you were to turn around and say, we're going to spend that contingency on something that's totally out of the scope of the project, that's not eligible. So you have to make sure that you stay within the eligible categories of of the project. So based on on the. The data that we just talked about, what we we came back with and we did our evaluation. And the project at this point is sixty five point two million dollars. With the increased reimbursement rate, you know, your reimbursement is forty four point. Oh nine and then the the net to the town is twenty one point one one. Now, this number does include items that we've just put a placeholder for as being ineligible. At the end of the day, if you don't spend, if if your costs are, your ineligible costs are less. Than your cost to the the cost to the town is less. So, you know, that's what what this is finding, but the most important number is the twenty one point one one because that's the number that. You know, that the town would be responsible for. And again, this is based on the sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty five gross square foot building. If you if you say, no, we want to build a larger building than that, then obviously the cost will go up. And those costs will be ineligible unless you get a space standard waiver.
And it also doesn't include the early childhood.
It doesn't include any of the, so anything that you get above and beyond is going to reduce the the cost of the town.
What is the percentage?
For the early childhood.
What's this assumption? What's the percentage?
So this one is based on the sixty sixty nine point six four. But if you do a straight number and you'll see it doesn't match because I put ineligible's in the in the.
Okay, this does, that's not include the land?
It does include, it includes a million dollars for the land.
Thank you.
So that's just an allowance. If the land ends up costing a hundred thousand dollars, you just save a hundred thousand dollars. So the next option is new school on on the hall side. I mean, it's obviously the bigger site has much more room. And, you know, what we did is we looked at the the site to say, what's the best way to handle this? As you know, I mean, this is not a twenty five acre site, you know, it's but we're working with what we have and that's that's fine. I mean, there are many schools that are built on sites that are smaller than the recommended guidelines for. Like if you go to Hartford, how many twenty five acre you don't, they're small, they're vertical. They barely have playgrounds, so we work with them and we're doing a middle school at Hartford, so I know exactly how big the the acreage is. But to to develop a, you know, a site in rural communities, I mean, that's, these are the guidelines and they're likely to be. In in these ranges. Once again, the reimbursement as it applies for as as a new school would be the same. So the same criteria that we had for a new school on a new site applies to a new school. Up on the hall side. So much of those numbers are going to be very, very similar in terms of what that that cost is. The difference is going to be that you don't have the, you're not purchasing a site. And and therefore, you know, that's going to reduce costs, but the reimbursement rates are going to be the same because it's looked at upon as a new school. Here's a diagram that that we did just to say, okay, how do we can we fit? You know, a new school on that site. And the goal was, I know that, I mean, the hall building is something that's it's not historic, but it's something that's very. Dear to many in the community. We don't have a new use for identified in this in this approach. What we have done is that academic wing that that comes out, I guess, to the. Between east. That in order to make this work, we removed that. And I think we in in past projects, we've been looking at different designs. In all cases, we moved that because that building, not only does it have so many different levels. But it also, it becomes really sprawling and 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 will be and and it takes up more site. So we needed that space on the site so that at least there was some room for athletic wheels and playgrounds. And appropriate parking and circulation. And we did this to do a test bit really to say, does it work? I mean, are we just kind of creating that? As a result of it, it it becomes a three story building because our goal is to make the the ground floor as compact as possible. Having said that, because it's an elementary school and you've got pre K K one. And those kids have to be on the level of exit discharge and their programs have to be. The the ground floor is pretty much dictated by those parameters. So that's how we established the the footprint of the building. And then we are going above that with the academic classrooms for the second through eighth grades. You know, we can try to make it a two story building, and that's some an option we could look at. But it's got spaces like gyms and all the other spaces that you need, so it becomes more. More, a little bit more difficult to have and to design it, but that's not to say not be done. This is at a very conceptual conceptual level. Our goal is to make sure that it that it fit on site. Square footage wise, once again, what we did is we maybe emulated what you have on the new site. So there's no distinction. It's a the same size building in in terms of total square footage. And 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 what we're showing is that it can fit on site. When we when we talk about the budget, we'll. Talk a little bit about what's not included in 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 this approach, especially when it pertains to the hall building. We did do a layout in order to understand how this would all work. So it's not just that I, you know, put a box together, my work very diligently on getting a program that that. Could, you know, does make sense and can can be implemented in in this process. And you can see this is why that first floor is so important, all these spaces that need to be on the first level have been identified. And then you have a a second and third floor, which are basically academic classrooms. Now, at the the hall school, I mean, we're basically, I think we have like six levels, even though because they're all half doubles, et cetera. So this is much simpler. There will be an elevator in here. All the, you know, everything that that we need for accessibility will be in in this particular building. The schedule.
Does this include demolition?
Yes.
It's going to be digging up sewers and all kinds of. Trying to reclaim the land kind of.
Yes.
Projects that will be needed.
So when we look at this, can, you know, this project again, in some ways, it's easier. I mean, let's talk about disruption to students. The new school on new site, there's no disruption because everybody's just, you know, life goes on and then they move, right? At the end of it, in this particular case, you know, what we would look at is can we take? And I don't think we would have to, but we would do an analysis of how the circulation would work. Because the the middle schoolers would be in the building back through eight, not if you could move the fifth graders out and accommodate them. At center, that'd be great, but ultimately, that building will be untouched. We'll build a new building would be the scenario and then when that building is built, they move in. And and it's important that in that summer, all this that site work would be done. So that when they move back in that fall, in in the fall, it would move into the new building. And we would be demolishing that, what we demolish is that academic wing that comes out. And that would be the extent of the work that we would do at at Hall. So when we looked at the the budget numbers here, we included the demolition of of the existing. Existing academic wing at Hall, but nothing else. We did not change it. I mean, obviously, where we demolished, we have to enclose that. And we would make sure that the building is fully functional. We've not identified a use for or any other, what we've tried to do is. You know, anticipate that it would be a complimentary use so that the parking and not knowing, you know, what the impact is. It might be a parking impact that we'd have to look at further. But the bottom line is, it's a it's a viable option. You can fit it on there. The site may be a little tight and depending on what you then put into the other building, that could be, that could generate some issues. This option ended up being slightly cheaper. And and the reason that's the case, because one, you're not buying any more site, a new site. And because we know what the utilities are, we know, you know, what the grades are. It's, there's a lot of knowns and everything is there, so your site costs were a lot lower. So that's that's one of the reasons why this number is is a a lower number than building a new building somewhere else. On a new brand new site. Now, it could turn out that you could find a site that has all the utilities and everything else and we'd have to reevaluate. Whether that number needs to be adjusted, but at this point, what we're trying to do is is make sure we have the worst case scenario. On on that new building inside so that you don't. Find the, you know, a site that works, but there there's some significant costs associated with it. So. As you can see, you know, we're using the rate of sixty sixty nine point six four. All the other parameters are the same because it's a a lower starting point on the budget. The reimbursement is slightly lower, but the net here is is at nineteen point four three. So instead of the twenty one point one one, we're now at nineteen point four three. And this solution has a has a net cost to the community.
So one point six eight million is the difference between those two projects. The other piece that I think is important is that if you just picture the academic wing and hall. And you just take a knife and you just chop that piece of the cake off, we'll call it, right? Everything else is as is, put the wall back up, make sure everything else is functioning. It's not, so people have asked, what happens to Hall? What happens to Center? It doesn't do anything else to Hall. There's no changes in heating, there's no A C. It just put a wall up, make sure that's functioning in that section now. And that's it. So I want to make sure it's clear to people that in this number, it's the new building and we'll call it just. Frosting that side of the cake, all right?
Why do we calling it new?
Because it is a brand new building on the site. And then, so I literally.
The gym and everything will be demolished.
Nope, no.
That's what I'm not understanding. Why is it new?
I'll show you exactly.
I I think the new building is what's being added on the site, but Hall is, only thing that's happening to Hall is that academic wing is being removed.
If we put class. Classrooms in the existing building or some grades remained in there, grade levels somehow. Would that be included in this project or is it now that we're doing two buildings?
Now you're doing two buildings.
So it's a whole different.
Yeah, it it totally changes the, how the calculation of what what you're doing. It's it's almost like if you were to say, oh, build an elementary school on on the hall site and then leave the six, seven, eight there.
Becomes a campus, not.
It's become the campus, you can you can do that. But now the six, seven, eight is in a in a building that's way oversized or. And and your reimbursement will be severely impacted.
I'm going to hijack your your screen for a second. So and if you just look at what this is, and this is the aerial view of Hall. This box right here goes away. That's, this is the demolition. Everything in this box remains and the new building is out here. So I don't know if you can see my mouth as I was doing that. So like, this right here is what's demolished. That's gone. Right, they're putting basically a new wall and this is all, I believe, nineteen eighty, right? That's a section that has no H vac, no ventilation, nothing, right? And then the new building piece put out here, maybe a little bit further out this way. And so this is the section and all of that would remain and none of it would be updated. It's not, it's just.
Is that just the, that's the hall building?
That's correct, so.
And that's not part of the school.
So then the new school on the hall site is the on your map. Is that built the white to the left, it's not on that. It's uh, it's that where it's a hero pre-K to eight school, sixty thousand square feet, and then the remaining is the the other part.
And that would all be brand new.
Yes.
Okay, I understand now why it's completely. Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually.
I just wanted to take a minute to address that um someone from the public has their hand raised. And hi, Jillian. I'd love to hear your comment. I'm gonna ask you if you could just hold on to that till the second president to speak, please. I've got your name down so I can touch base with you again. Thank you. All right. Are there page, there's not page numbers, right? Not already. Okay, so Jillian, keep track of what we were talking about when you had the question. Okay.
So the the final solution or the option that we looked at is option C. Which which is renovate is new, which is basically saying we're gonna take all, similar to what we proposed on another year's uh project. Uh and and renovate and add to it and make it a pre-K through eight school. And and so we started with with that premise. Now, when you do a renovate this new school, you get that additional bump in in your uh reimbursement. So really, starting at sixty-four point six four as a as a total value plus the fifteen, so you're seventy-nine point six four. So upset now you're, your reimbursement from the state is increased quite a bit. Thanks to the the legislation that was approved. And you can still then add to it if you can make the case for the special education and the early childhood components. Uh and I know, so that's, that's all a very, a positive thing for this particular approach to the project. The the challenge with this project is that we still have to have. All those basic functions that we talked about for the pre-K K one and access to the programs on the ground level. So what happens is that footprint ends up being new and it has to, you know, it's an added footprint. So when we looked at this, the the smallest we could get the program down to um was was seventy. Eighty, I'm sorry, eighty-four point eighty-four thousand six four hundred and sixty-three square feet. So whereas before we're talking about a sixty-some thousand square foot building, now we're talking about a bigger building. Uh because we just have to fit all the other programs on that ground level. Uh but at the end of the day, you're taking that entire addition. And you're and you're uh, you know, building a new addition and you're renovating the entire existing building. We're still demolishing that seventeen thousand, sixteen to seventeen thousand square feet academic wing, uh just because of the way the site would. You know, one of the advantages of something like this is uh is that. This red dashed line sort of defines the existing building and everything on the other side of that red dashed line is what we'd be constructing. So the goal would be, you construct that side of the building. You move the kids into that building, that part of the building. You renovate the rest of the building and once you're done with renovation, you know, the the middle schoolers move back in there. And then everybody moved back into the building and now it's a fully renovated building and all the amenities are there and they're working. But the the biggest challenge on it is, you know, we've got an addition that's causing the square footage to be higher. Now, that's in line with what you were originally trying to to do. So you're actually meeting more of your educational programs. The 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 reason it's it it's larger is simply because. You know, we're we're taking out what we can from the existing building. But what what really is necessary is the the space for the pre-K through to one, and that's dictating the square footage of the building and our function. So. You know, that's the the floor plan. And and again, this is a concept level showing the second floor. This is really a a similar to a plan that we presented before because it it really didn't, you know, we weren't gonna redesign everything on on that. But it does, it's slightly modified to meet all the criteria. Uh and we did take into account the fact that your enrollment has uh has decreased. As I said right in the beginning, a decrease in enrollment really impacts you because now it affects your space standards. So multi-level building, but the pre-K through uh one programs are on the first level, everything is accessible. And the building functions fairly well. The schedule is similar. Uh it's, you know, it it's a smaller addition, so that goes. We anticipate in the first year, the addition happens, gets moved in there, and next year, uh the renovation occurs. And then at the end of that second year, uh the the building is complete and and you move into this particular building. So from a cost perspective, there's no real uh significant implications there. So what does that mean when we say, okay, we we're building our our overall square footage is a bigger building? And what happens is, and so you were building, you know, a a gross square foot eighty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-three square foot building. Because you're going over your space standards, that portion is now, is an adjustment to your reimbursement. And and in this case, what ends up happening is with the adjustment, your reimbursement radius is. Uh seventy-nine point six four uh is about sixty-eight point six uh in percentage for reimbursement. Which is not big, but it it but it's there. Um so your sixty, the the project costs are the highest because it's sixty-eight point six nine million. The, with the adjusted reimbursement rate, you get forty-five point seven seven million from the state. And the net cost to the town is twenty-two point ninety-two million. So. You know, we're talking about nineteen point four three compared to the twenty-one point one one compared to the twenty-two point nine two. Now, what I did do is look at what would happen if we were to get a space standard waiver. For this project. So, you know, and and I said, that's something that you can pursue and and should, we should be able to make a pretty strong case for it because. Even though you you have a boost in in your square footage, your allowable square footage for buildings that are older. It doesn't really fully address the impact that the building has because of all the stairs and all the different uh. Hallways and things that are, that are there in this existing building. Uh I think we can make a very compelling state that that case with the state to say, we we need a space standard waiver on it to be able to accommodate that. And the fact that we're building the new for the pre-K through one on on the ground level. And that, these are all factors that impact. You know, your reason for requesting that space standard waiver. So with that in mind, uh I did run some numbers on it.
Mike, are you in? Did you exit that in edit mode? In edit mode? Just so when we print this come on, I think that's option C at the top of that slide.
Yes.
Well, I'll be quoting that here.
So if we were to get the space standard waiver, the net cost would actually drop down to about fourteen million.
For option C?
For option C. So that's something that you really wanna pursue. Is that, and that's without any other, you know, not looking for any other uh relief, like for instance, for the early childhood or the special education.
Can you say that number again, please?
So it's actually thirteen point nine nine.
Net, right, to be.
The net, not moving. This last side is really one where we did a comparison to of the three projects. You know, what you'll notice that they're all fairly similar. There's nothing uh, you know, that that stands out. I think the the option A with the new site is because we don't know what that site is, you know, that. That's slightly, you know, there's not, there's no concern about it, as long as there's a site available uh for you. But dollars and cents wise, they're very similar in the net cost to to the community. And and program-wise, in this scenario, because. We're keeping more of the existing building, you have more space for programs. Special ed and programs, etc., because there's lots of small uh small instructional spaces that remain. And that's also helping the the overall program.
Do you remember, so we had done a different model of the renovate to new pre-K to eight at Hall? What the square footage was? Was it about the same? You remember what the model, I was just trying to find it. I can't find it.
I have it.
I was trying to compare it to.
Back then, we were looking at a four hundred and thirty-one enrollment.
Right.
At the renovate is new option, we were eighty. Eighty-nine thousand.
Okay, that's what I told.
Ninety-two net square, but but that's a net square foot number, not a gross square foot, whereas this is a gross square foot, not real.
Okay.
But so it's, it was about, this is still slightly smaller than.
Yeah.
The addition.
Yeah. When in the process, would you know or would we know if we received space waiver?
I I think that process could start at, as soon as you have a concept, let's say you passed the project you want to pursue. We have some concept designs and I think uh that discussion can happen anytime and things truly a matter of. Putting a letter to the commissioner, Commissioner of Education. It's not, doesn't go through a legislative process. It's more dictated by the Commissioner of Education.
And can that apply to any of the three options?
Yes, space standards can imply, I mean, there's this new schools in Cheshire that got granted space standard waivers.
Especially going pre-K eight.
Right.
You get the science labs, you get the bigger gym.
Yeah.
You stop with that.
I mean, technically, because you're combining the two enrollments, you actually lose some square footage. Because you you exceed the three hundred and fifty student threshold. So you know, the 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 way they set up the table was not very, you know, didn't anticipate that, you know, you're actually. If you should get the higher numbers for a a combined school, it it does get to get penalized a little bit.
That's where we sat with OS CGR and they saw that and understood it. We sat with them and went through the a a model and said, here's our square footage, tell us how we can get rid of it. Are you gonna cut, you can't cut an office? I mean, to get down to the number. It is, it was very, very hard to do because it was a pre-K eight.
Right.
If it was, you know, in in an elementary school only. Your gym shrinks, your cafeteria shrinks, your, you know, the number of spaces, you don't have science labs. Those things really make an impact on your square footage.
Better question, and it's really a probably a silly question, so we're gonna have to. So we're putting money aside currently in the town, right, where we're putting seven million dollars aside for school repair and contingency and things like that. Is there a way? If if five years plus that, five million dollars, but is there a way to apply that money to this number? Can that money only be used for, is it only legally allowed to be made for bond payments going forward? So what I'm saying is like, let's say we got space waiver and the number's thirteen point nine nine million. If you went to the town with eight point nine nine million by applying that five million, it's a lot more attractive number than thirteen point nine nine million. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that would work or not.
So ultimately, when you go to referendum, you have to go for the full amount.
Right.
So even though you know what the net cost is and um lots of communities, what they do is they write the 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 language from the referendum language to say. This is the total cost that you're approving and with the net cost of the town being, it's all contingent of the net cost of the town being whatever that doubt that is. So um can you apply that money? I mean, I think that's more of your bonding, the attorneys and so on, they will tell you. I mean, you could, you know, you're gonna get other monies for this project too, like uh every source will have rebates. On the elementary school we're doing right now, the the rebate is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Structure is such that that money, you know, you can't get a a grant or additional monies. And then apply and and would still get the 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 reimbursement from the state. So that that money will be sort of extracted from the account. You can still apply it to this project, but it would be in those for any reimbursement.
And isn't um our five million also to help with the bonding? So that that first year, we can um decrease the increase of the mill rate.
That's what Arthur's asking. How would that money be applied?
Two ways to look at it. You'd either, you'd either bond, you know, the the ideally the the fourteen million. And then have that money as bond payment, or you could bond nine million and not have the money for the bond payment, but have a lower bond payment. So it's kind of. It will be best.
Yeah, I think you'd end up running those bond numbers to see how, what the impact goes. Either way, it's typically year one and two is where you get hit. And just how big a hit is it? Is it better to apply all of it to bring the the bond number lower or is it, you know, apply less and you're using the the money you've saved up to. Pay off those first couple of years where it's really, that's a, that's a lot more. Did you have anything to go through on that last, on the um the legislative approval slide?
No, that was uh, no, other than, I think we we covered it on in the beginning. Um you know, it's more to let everybody know that those options exist. Uh and they could be pursued. Uh I'll be more knowledgeable this, we've got two projects that we're gonna meet with the commissioner on to discuss, especially the early childhood component. One's a building that's gonna be all early childhood, so they're excited about saying, okay, we get another fifteen percent. And the other is an elementary school, same, similar to yours that are looking for that fifteen percent. And they want to pursue the special education because they do have a larger group of uh, you know, need for special education.
Are the requirements for each of those two spelled out in in the legislation that we have?
You know, the language that I put up is the language that's there and it's not very.
It's not, there's no bullets about what it must be.
No.
They have to figure out how to apply it now. I mean, right, that's, it's when it goes to OS CGR, they're gonna follow, hey, does it meet the statute or not, right?
I mean, yeah, the early childhood makes a statement that says it's eligible for the entire project. So whereas at least the special education talks about more pertinent to the special education spaces. So, you know, I'm anticipating that maybe it's not a stand-up, you know, getting the entire fifteen unless. In in the case where you've got the entire building is an early childhood building. Now, if it's a mix, I wouldn't be surprised if they say, well, maybe we'll give you some, but not all. But like every, every percentage point is.
The, the way the legislation was written, it was for the, on the pre-K side, it was just for that space.
Okay.
So if you had two new pre-K classes, uh classrooms and then applied. The additional percentage for reimbursement only implied to, two times eight hundred square feet, right? Not the whole project. The new change this year, which is kind of the rule, it's like, hold on, that's a big change. Is that if you did a pre-K fortune, that it applied to every high percentage. That's why I was, you know, questioning like, you you apply for it and if you don't get it, you don't get it.
And yeah, and it was underlined.
It was.
I I put it exactly how it's shown in in the legislation of the pre.
For the entire school.
Yeah, for the entire school with any project.
We have our two pre- pre-K classrooms.
That's, and that's a, I mean, for the number of people that are putting, putting in projects, that's huge.
And actually, on a percentage basis, you guys have, you know, because if if there's a school of seven hundred and fifty kids or something like that. The pre-K at thirty or forty is a much lower percentage, but you know, based on your enrollment, it's a much higher percentage overall. So I think you can make a compelling case. I think if you get some money from that and you get the space standard waiver. Uh that would be ideal. Space standard waiver, and you know, I've seen it as something. Space standard waiver, and you know, I've seen it as something that the commissioners drafted. And you made face to them, and we generally what we've done in the past is how we put all the documentation together and make the case, you know, identify it, it then goes through the superintendent to the commissioner, say, here's why we need to to get this waiver. Um in some cases, we got a hundred percent of that uh additional spread footage paid. Um and in other cases, we've got anywhere from fifty to twenty five percent, but they said, oh, it'll give you some credit for, but not all of it. But in all cases, I mean, that's just it to spend, keep spending the number down, which is ultimately the goal.
Russell, do you think, sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you think it muddies the water? You you gave a number for option C of if we got the space waiver.
Yeah.
Do you think that should be aligned for all options? If we apply for the space waiver for A, here's your number, are you gonna give it? Is that what you're looking at? Okay.
So I did, I did a calculation.
Okay.
But the fact is that the new schools, we based on the space standards.
So you're not gonna, if you were gonna go above?
Above that.
Okay.
So really, what you would be looking for is a building that's slightly bigger than that to accommodate all your programs that you had identified initially.
Yeah.
So right now, we've made some adjustments to that. Um but in, let's say you went to seventy, and instead of the sixty some thousand, we went higher. I can, you know, we can run those calculations with the space standard waiver.
So could they see, because they did net spec, right, and you're basing it off of net spec, and the net spec was around seventy two.
Seventy two, yeah.
So if you're coming down twelve, I think that'd be important for them to see, so that way they knew if they were over the space standard, over the sixty, they knew what, if they're gonna stay at sixty, what are they losing?
Yeah.
Right, so you mentioned like, hey, I brought a classroom from nine hundred square feet to eight hundred square feet, times ten, you got, right, you got some, some, some square footage, but it's not twelve thousand.
Yeah. At a big number, I mean, we, you know, we took out the auditorium, but then the uh uh certain spaces to the auditorium. Uh they were, we've got a spreadsheet that identified that, because we anticipated
Yeah.
that this is not a decision that we make by ourselves, I mean, you've done enough school projects that
Right.
I know, want to recommend, but ultimately, the board would have to prove it.
It's just a good talking point for you to understand, because it's sixty thousand square feet, the auditorium was at eighty three. So seventy five was without the auditorium, so I wanna make sure you want seventy two was up the other time, seventy two or seventy five. But I think it's important for you to know, if that's something that, you know, you could share to say, okay, here's how we came down to that number. Um and what, you know, you lose some hallways, because you need the hallway into an auditorium that doesn't exist, right? But I think it's important for you to understand what that looks like, because you did approve a net spec.
And bringing us, so yeah, I did notice that we only have two of each class. Right now, we have three, we have two classrooms, right now, we have three of many grades, we only have two classrooms at seven and eight. Right now, we have four classes at seven and eight, I'm just wondering if it's gonna really change our program.
So that you could call that they have three, because the science lab would be, so they're third. So they had A eight and then a science lab, so there's three.
Yeah.
Um there's, they're basing it on the the enrollment.
That has the enrollment cost down, the other thing I noticed is one art room, one music room, one one gym, and right now, we're pretty much using two sets of each. Um so I'm wondering.
That would be a brand new schedule, though, you wouldn't know, yeah.
It could, it could work with that many.
I mean, Ashford's a prime example of that, they're operating about three hundred and fifty kids and probably similar square footage in one gym, one art room.
With one of each.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say that um you were talking about the um pre K population and our ed spec calls for two classrooms, so we're doubling our program. So that gives us even more students that um a higher percentage of our overall group is what I'm gonna say.
I think one of the things that you should try and walk away with tonight, and I don't know if you want to stop sharing, just so we can see if I'm not Jen and John, if they're still out there, if they have any questions, but um kinda, are there next steps for Rusty and and Mike? Are there, are there, is there further information that we wanna dig into? Um you know, the land discussion is a biggie, right? What is the land, if you're going to try and have that as an option, if there's no land, there there's no option. Right, so do you want them to try and do that work with me, with the subcommittee, you know, that's something that you could look at? Do you want to dig into the ed spec more, that may or may be without them? Um you know, what your next steps are, there's things you can do as a board to keep the process going without the school, doing the school building committee yet, right? And so to get to figure out where you wanna go, which project, what you're looking at here, um you are just looking at square footage pricing, he's got that last page with the kind of the plus or minus is right, is it a disruption, is it not a disruption, does it, you know, all those things? And as a board, what other information would you need and how can QA and then help to try and follow that decision and and get more information out to public for feedback?
I think we as a group, should we visit our ed specs and maybe update them a little bit, or at least compare them to to our options and.
It goes less than half of us created it. Hmm so, yeah, that's, that's a biggie.
So to do that, that would be something important to to share that spreadsheet, so I know, you know, we could just walk through the ed spec and know what what's come down. Um I think that's important, I think your option really, for A and B, for to know what you're getting for sixty thousand square feet is important, or what you're not getting. You know, what would you not sacrifice? And say, so then you're over that number, changes of your actual dollar.
So once you settle in on that, and you know, let's say, it's not gonna be sixty thousand, it's gonna be, let's say, sixty seven thousand, I'm just throwing out numbers, then we can take that and and put the the budget to that number and also put the uh reimbursement impact is, and then you could identify what the net result is with the with the waiver.
Yeah.
So you'd have the same scenario for all three options that way.
And then the um looking if our land can happen without a school building committee?
Yeah, I mean, a board that could do that work, because you're, I mean, the first time around, I sat with the land office and just kept looking at things, I mean, I was laughing before when you said there's some towns that are, you know, have mountains and wetlands, I'm like, welcome to Wellington, right? We're either going up or down, um and at the bottom is typically the wetlands, so you know, central, as we all know in this town, is Ruby Road from the library to the truck stop, right? That's central, and it's a big giant hill. So um you know, we need to, I think that would be helpful. Uh the school building committee already did a lot of that work. We only, and this is a question I asked Rusty, and I think it's important for you to hear it, I, because we, when we initially did this work looking at land, we only looked at open properties, no buildings. So if it had a house on it, it could be a house with fifty acres and it might be great, we didn't look at that. Um we only looked at land, and I said, Rusty, would you change that process? And your response was, no, really, it's, you just, unless, you know, the sounds.
This is a shack that you can easily demolish or something, you know, it's not a meaningful structure. And you would, you would, you know, because what are you gonna do with that building?
Right.
If you do have a house on a large plot, could you sell the house or or somehow just buy the?
I mean.
Ultimately, what the, you know, the state would be looking for is a parcel of certain acreage and all those other criteria in terms of utilities and so on. If it's larger than that, you can still purchase it, but you're not even getting reimbursement.
So then you need to figure out, that's something you want. Uh what does that look like for you, what is the the time look like, does it just going back through the the stuff that we have identified, do you start from scratch, what did that look like for you?
If you've identified sites, and there's no need to repeat that word, because you guys know the the town the best in terms of, and if there are others that come up, there, you know, the once that's the case, and we understand that we can do topography etcetera, you know, the GIS mapping etcetera with our civil engineers, and then really develop a shortlist, because you do wanna walk the sites.
Yeah, which is what we did, and that's why it's it's hard. I, you know, we went through a lot, and we ruled out a lot, because you could just look at, you know, topography, and there's, you're on a cliff, and that site is out, you know, um or there are certain sections in town, like you mentioned, that might have a great piece of land, but it's seven miles from the main road where bringing in utilities would be, you know, a nightmare. Um because we had a couple of sites that were, you know, I'm gonna say, I think, uh, one was Douglas Meadow that we looked at. That means nothing to you, it means some dust, it's just, it was not an easily accessible site. So if it's just gonna repeat the same thing, I don't know if it's worthwhile. Um it might make sense for me to pull that list back together and review with the board.
And add anything that's new.
Uh if it's, I don't know that there is anything new, that's my point, is the land is the land, it wasn't whether it was for sale or not. It was land that was over a certain acreage that wasn't on a uh wetlands, right? And was accessible, somewhat central, and we even straight from that, so just to try and find a piece of land, to be honest with you. Um and then that's not on the cliff, and then that's where the list was generated from, and I had a lot of help from, you know, sorry, this, I pointed this office over here, I'm, you know, building the zone, like, yeah, yeah, we would just go on the GIS map and and look at it and go, there's no way, look at all the wetlands. Um or look where it is.
There was a whole matrix that included things about power and water and.
So I don't know that that really helps us.
Once you, once you have your s- some sites identified, then we do need to do things like test bits etcetera to to make sure that there is the ability to be able to put a septic system in there, or, you know, and bring in, and what's the well? Whether it's wells or it's, is it water, is your ultimately, your building has to be sprinkled. Therefore, you know, what's the, you know, what kind of pressure, you know, and some, there's a lot of
Yeah.
other work that goes in there to make sure that the appropriate utilities are going to be there. And the the last, the the site that you do select, the state's gonna look for that, that additional time and and reports to to the effect that, yes, it's a viable property. And they will, I mean, if you have a piece of property that weapons are, let's say, and it's fifty acres, you only need twenty five, and the other twenty five is uh what's happened in the past is they prorated the the weapon piece to count to nothing, and then the usable acreage is where the value was. So you could do that, if, you know, if there was such a piece of property available.
Yeah, we also didn't tend to look at, I think, if I'm remembering properly here, we didn't look at, you know, hundred and fifty acre spots, like, we kind of cut it off around a certain number, because it was, you're gonna pay for it all. Um it's just a different, that's the only thing I think we could add, is look at larger plots. I mean, there's a three hundred and sixty acres for sale on three twenty, it's a, it's over a million dollars, right? But it's, it's on three twenty, I don't know what the land looks like, but I'm not sure we really spent a lot of time looking at that. We might have cut it off at, you know, forty three, fifty acres, it's just kind of ringing the bell here. It's just that you're gonna pay more for all the land, and you're only gonna get reimbursed on a portion.
Absolutely. If they're not willing to supplement it, you can cut it out.
Right, which the, which might be worthwhile, yeah.
It's worth always asking.
Yeah, yeah, so that's something I can look at the list and just see um.
Then we need main road access for the buses, to be sure that the buses can live in and out safely.
Yeah, which they drive all over town anyways, but it's just where the location of your school is what, you know.
It's concentrated.
Right, Hall is as southern as it it gets in in the town. Um but we also go to a regional school for high school, or a technical school, which is further away. So I think people that's very used to that.
It would, even in some of these models, though, they have um like entrance routes and exit routes, so it's not just one driveway off of one road that we would be hoping for, so there has to be room to maneuver buses through all of that too.
Which, that's where you're relying your planners to say, okay.
They have that.
Work, yeah.
Um I think that we probably should also give more consideration to what um we can do with the buildings that we are not going to use more at the front of this, rather than leaving it as an afterthought, because that will certainly add costs to the whole entire situation.
So if you get to a point where you're gonna recommend a school building committee, and you recommend a project, whatever it is, I think you should also be recommending that be one of the charge items, because that was kind of, you know, something that felt last time, if people wanted that information.
Yeah, I think I'd rather see that more as a priority.
Yeah.
Um this time.
And but I think that would be school building committee related, it's not necessarily this group.
Yeah.
You're trying to narrow down to what project, but anything that you wanna recommend in the charge, I think, has weight, right? So what I'm hearing you say is review ed specs, right? That's kind of a priority, I can, I can do the land search again and share that with you. Um I can share that with you too, if you, you know, you wanna look at that. Um and that would help you take options A, B, and C. They could take basically the re- a rerun of your, your financial piece, right? Um we know that we could fit a new building on the Hall site. Um I think if that's, that would help you narrow down, because I do think you should make a recommendation about a specific project. If you're gonna call school building committee, not leave it open, um because then it's more targeted. Especially if you want a June twenty five, uh sorry, June twenty six application.
We we wait, we, I won't use that word, but we spent a lot of time talking about options last time, maybe a year or or more, just talking about.
Well, this, I mean, he put, I, I, maybe I put a real price tag on it, but I mean, this legislative change, or the where it's got an actual dollar per square foot, that's gonna be, they're gonna hold you to, that's real money. So escalation plus that, year millions, right? Wait a year, you're five, five percent plus your, the additional square foot less, you know, what you're gonna get less is three million on a sixty thousand square foot building, and again, there might be some, some, it might not, it's not exact, because you know, there's some things that are inallegable, but it's millions.
It might help for people to know too, how much was that this school year on repairs and things falling apart? Um and like big projects that we had handle.
Which a lot of what we just did last meeting, right, I think I reviewed a bunch of the stuff for maintenance last meeting, it'll also be at the end of the year um.
Nine.
Nine, nine.
Ninety nine thousand, any year or.
What were we missing, guys?
No, that's it, I mean, you know, we'll get you the, what we did for updating the ed spec.
Yeah.
Um and we'll, you know, once you tell us where you wanna settle with the ed spec, and we'll update the option, more so option A and B, and rather than often C, because often C pretty much carried a lot of what was there before.
Yeah.
Um and then we'll update with that, the budget and the net impact with and without the uh space name.
September fourth, uh fourth, I don't wanna get that date wrong, September fourth is the joint meeting um that Representative Nuccio will be at to talk about the updated legislation. That's, the invitation went out to all the chairs, uh first, the Sleckman, the C I P chair um and Board of Finance, I don't, hopefully, they, that was distributed to each of the boards, uh going to the full board for you as well. Um, and Board of Finance, I don't, hopefully they, that was distributed to each of the boards, uh, went to the full board for you as well. You know, that was sent. Do you see QA and I'm having a presence there doing? I don't know that this whole presentation is makes sense to do there. I think it's gonna be too much. It's it, it's already been done. But I think sharing something there about direction, which means. You have just under a month from yesterday. Until that meeting, so if there's work that you want us, you want them to do in that meantime, I think that's important to walk away tonight knowing.
Do we want to present these three options that night? Or will we make a decision about which option the board supports before that night?
That's up to the board, I think, the, again, land piece to me could. If there's a piece of land out there, it stays as an option. If there's not a piece of land out there, it's not really an option and you're down to the whole school site. And then it's what you propose doing from there. If it's purely about dollars, which in this town, it might be purely about dollars. And did that might play into it, and so then your head spec gets updated. Rusty takes the numbers and he changes it with the new head spec and if you. You have the numbers with the waiver and without the waiver, that's just for us, right? And then is it just financial then?
I also think once we get some clarity about the preschool and the special ed, I think we should apply those percentages. Also as other possibilities if we find out specifically.
Where will that happen? Like, where will we know that going in? I don't, and I know. I know Tammy Nuccio is worried about that too, and so am I. I don't want to. We can see with the, we all read the legislation. We all believe it says one thing, but when would we have that particular answer?
I, I think, you know, I, in my opinion, you can approach the commissioner at any time and try to request a meeting. So, yeah, because no matter what project you're doing, you're gonna have that as a component. And and say, look, in order to, so whether that comes from the chair, the board or or the superintendent, I mean, that's. Uh, in in the case of one of my other clients, it's gone from the board, the board chair, made that request. In conjunction with the superintendent, uh, in 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 the case, the other case, I think there. Uh, it's probably still gonna come from the chairman of the board event, but I'm not sure of that.
Cause it does make a big difference.
Yes.
Potentially thirty percent reimbursement something.
And what are you bringing that to that, Rusty? Are you, you bringing uh? Uh, your plan and they're just listening to it? Are you bringing schematics? What, what are you bringing?
It's a renovated is new, one of them is a one renovated, both of them actually would be a renovated is new. Uh, but we're just demonstrating that, look, here's all the pre-K program that's being provided and here's all the special ed program that's being provided. We feel we're eligible for that, for that reimbursement, that additional reimbursement and after that, it's a dialogue. That's what I'm anticipating.
They won't say you're getting it. Will they say you're going to get the space waiver? They won't say that, that, that's, this is the battle we had, right?
You, you would, uh, there's a letter that the commissioner will send you.
At some point they send that, when is that?
When you make your, so if you've got a project and you, and you, and in fact. It could be part of this meeting and to be prepared for it, if you have a direction you're going in. Let, let's say it's the renovation project, you know, and you, you go in there and say, look, here's our. Here's the situation, here's our existing building, we'll write up a narrative for that and and submit that narrative to them. And 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 then they will review it and what will happen is they will have their, uh, the school facilities, folks. Uh, all the reviewers evaluated and, you know, they'll probably call me and say, okay, you. Identified this square footage, why, and, you know, and and there'll be some discussion. But you would get a response to, at the end of the day, we can, you know, anticipate a response from them and, you know, we, you know, you just have to. Get a pushy in this request, you know, that can we get back, cause it's important to the community and making the determination on what project to go with.
That's the biggest thing, I think, for the town is knowing the number.
Yeah.
And the better. Whether it's really expensive or not that expensive, everybody wants to know the number, right? Are you spending forty thousand dollars for a truck or you're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a truck? Everybody wants to know the number. In this case, it really matters because we're talking about millions. So you know, you know, you got everybody's attention tonight, if you saw. Like I go, I'm gonna go back and watch a tape when you said fourteen million tonight, everybody sat up in their seats and read it, wrote, you know. That matters, and so I think the more we can guarantee, um, the better.
But, I mean, and again, that goes back to get having that discussion with, you know, going. And that, that portion of it, what we'd have to confirm is, is at this point, you don't have a, a submitted project.
Right.
And is that, i- if we approach it in the sense that this is the project we're anticipating. And and we would like to know what the, you know, the status of the space standard would be, here's all the criteria. You might be able to to get that determination. It may, there may be a caveat there that, you know, depending on the approval of the project. In other words, yes, that, that is a reasonable request. But you have to still submit your grant application and get that approved.
Right.
You know, so, but you'd have something in hand, please, to to make your case that, look. The communication's been there with the commissioner and the OGA and, you know, reviewers. And now, you know, and here's what the response has been, so you can walk in there with some certainty.
That sounds nice, walking there with some certainty. All right, so we're waiting to find out about available land. We're gonna look over that specs again. We talked about front loading, what to do with unused buildings because that's kind of heavy. And then we're on hold as far as requesting a school building committee because. We don't have our project picked out just yet and we want that charge to be very specific. Well, we don't get to make the charge, but we can make recommendations and want it to be as specific as possible. So those things are in progress, right? Um, and I don't remember if this topic is on our agenda for next week. But we will be having that joint board committee meeting on the fourth. Uh, which of course is open to public, are we having that here?
That's it, the whole library.
And we inviting all three boards this.
All three boards have been. That's what we need, you need to figure out what their role was that night.
Like to have you, they're just, you can field questions, I mean. We wrote down things as best we could this evening, but you, you're the professional.
Yeah, and we may have more information based upon the work we can, you know. Think that's makes sense.
Just to talk about where we stand and of course, the point is for Tammy to share also what she's, um, been able to accomplish. Which is really gonna help us a lot, so that's wonderful. Okay, um, I wanted to check with our board members on Zoom. Did either of you want to ask a question or make a comment since you're not here in IRL? Oh, hi Sam, you're there too.
I had a quick question on, do we have like, I, it might have been said, I'm, I have poor reception. Timeline on space waivers, how long does it take for them to actually make a decision? Do we have any backdate on that?
In, in the past, I've had some really quick responses, uh, you know. I say quick, a month or two, uh, and sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Uh, the only challenge here would be that those are all for projects that have been approved. Uh, and and there's a direction with those projects, so, um. You know, I, I don't know if the response would be, wait till your project is.
Right.
Uh, in that has been decided upon by the board. But, I mean, it's simply a matter of superintendent making a request. And submitting the data and, you know, to the commissioner's office.
Okay.
Yeah, last time that happened, they said, it's likely you'll get it, but they wouldn't. Like Rusty said, we didn't have a project yet, it wasn't approved. They won't, they wouldn't do it until it was an approved project by the state.
Approved on a referendum vote or approved by the state of Connecticut, they'll, they'll reimburse?
Connecticut's, so application in and the state is approving your project.
Okay.
There's a lot of conversations that happen in that process. I think, and this is the, and I know it hurts a timeline, but I think it helps the potential for town support. And the actual number is that, put the application in and then do, you've already had conversations about. You know, doing the light work to say, hey, we want the, the, to apply for additional percentage for preschool space. We wanna apply for space waiver, we'll have those conversations. We would then get that information once our application's in, prior to referendum.
Yeah, you can, because what would happen is once you get your application, is the state would rather you submit your application and not wait till June thirty. Cause they wanna be able to do an initial review before all your final paperwork, you know, is even. But in case they say, look, you need to provide us X, Y, and Z additional information.
Yeah.
With your application, that's also the opportunity to discuss things like space standard waiver. So ideally, you could get that, you know, and just have that discussion during the. The application, let's say if you were to get the application in, in, in May sometime or even earlier. And there's nothing that precludes you from putting this application tomorrow and if you, you know, there's a lot of documentation.
Right.
That you have to, but you can put it in any time during the, the, the year. Because there are districts that, that actually put in the application and just wait. I mean, wait in the sun, they continue with their project, as long you're following the state's procedures, you're eligible. Uh, as long as you follow their, their guidelines and then once it gets approved, you know, and 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 goes into the cycle, it's just. It's part of the course of that.
Jen or Sam, did you? Want to ask anything?
I don't have any questions, I appreciate the offer though.
Okay. Hey Sam.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to add that I am interested in going over the ed specs, cause I'm not that familiar with them. So I'm glad to do that. And, uh, that's all I got so far. So I'm just absorbing everything, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, um. Would you hold on with us because I, we're gonna move to agenda five, which is present to speak and I think we probably have some questions from. Our, our citizens that you're. Typically, um, during present to speak, there is not a conversation, but, um, it is allowable. And in this situation, I think that's probably what's best, so, um, we are ready for present to speak. Please make sure to state your name and address at the beginning and we need to go back to Jillian first if we can. And she's been waiting a while. Is she still there?
I'll see her.
Okay, if anybody knows Jillian, let her know, it's time to pop back with us. All right, Mr. Tien. I see your hand up, would you like to share your thoughts?
Hi, good evening, thank you Brianna, um, John T. Hand, twenty-six Eldridge Mills Road. Um, I've been doing a little bit of research into the situation at Hall School. Um, and one of the things that I found was, um, meeting minutes from a meeting of the Board of Selectmen in nineteen forty-nine. Um, in this, uh, meeting, uh, the, the Board of Selectmen was discussing the need. Uh, to consolidate our schools into one building, um, and it seems like so this is an argument or a, uh. A discussion that's been going on for quite a while, uh, in town. Um, at the time, um, the Board of Selectmen decided against building additional, um. Uh, buildings or in addition to the Hall School property. Under the theory that they could not burden, uh, future taxpayers, uh, with. A decision to, uh, build a building on a piece of property that we don't actually own. Um, and I wonder what's changed and why we feel that we should do that now. Uh, it seems to me that, uh, that we build this, uh, big building and, uh, if we don't use it as a school, for whatever reason. It reverses the control of the Hall Family Foundation and, uh, our taxpayers are out of luck on a, on a big giant building that we just built. Um, I, uh, so I questioned the wisdom of, of, uh, trying to build, uh, anything, uh, on the Hall School property without. Uh, adequate disposition of that property, perhaps the Hall Family Foundation would consider selling it. Uh, to us if we wanted to build a building on that property and that would allay those, uh, concerns. Um, but I would certainly be concerned, uh, uh, as that Board of Selectmen meeting in nineteen forty-nine was also concerned. Um, so thank you, that's, uh, that's my point.
Thanks for the history lesson, John. And, um, you're right that the property ownership of that building and that land. Some of it belongs to the town, most of it belongs to the Hall Foundation, so yeah, that's definitely something that we need to keep, keep in mind for sure. So thanks for bringing up that point again. Um, Mike?
Hi, Mike McCoo, Clover Springs Drive. Um, I'm very excited to hear all this conversation, I'm sure that won't surprise people. I was involved in the previous school building committee, uh, for some of the time, I was also chair. Um, I know that some people in town will look at it as the previous committee failed. Um, in fact, it did fail to bring a project into, um, construction, but process wise, I don't believe it failed. We learned a lot, we did a huge amount of work, we elicited opinion. And in the end, the process did exactly what it was supposed to do. Something was presented to the taxpayers and they determined that they did not want it. So moving forward from that, lessons learned, I think we come into this process much better prepared. Um, and obviously this opportunity with the added reimbursement is an incredible opportunity. And you can see the support for that across the board when, um, Selectman Clark sent out the notice. Um, that was paid for by the Republican Town Committee to talk about how wonderful it was that we were able to get this. Hard work, the success of this hard work coordinating with Tammy Nuccio. And, um, so this opportunity clearly is seen as a bipartisan win. Clearly there's support from the Republican Town Committee and from Selectman Clark to move forward with something like this, so I think. My point is we're in a new place, we've learned so much and we have all of the work done previously that we can still use as a resource. And go forward from there, it doesn't mean we just take all that work and reuse it. Um, but we can use a lot of it, we can pick the parts that are relevant today and move forward, um. The last time we approved a big project was fifty years ago. And those projects were completed in eighty and eighty-one. And, um, I was attending those schools when it happened. It was incredibly valuable to the community to make those updates. And this next project, whatever this board decides to put forward and the townspeople approve, I think will be the next. Fifty years or more of value to the community and hopefully fifty years from now when they're talking about it again. Someone who attended school there like I did and many of you in this audience did. And will say, okay, the right decision was made in twenty twenty-five and now it's time for us to do the next thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Matt.
Hi, Matthew Clark, um, so I was pleased with the proposals, um, it was very helpful presentation. Pretty well done, um. I hope we're looking at, you know, a broad array of options to move forward, uh, some decisions to be made, um. About how, the best options, um, I think it's important that we provide taxpayers and referendum voters. With as much surety as possible, um, you know, that's. People need to know, have a clear understanding of, of what the cost is going to be and, and, um. Without any guesswork about what's approved, what's not approved. You know, what waivers we're gonna get, what we're not gonna get, um, so I think that's important. And, um, I look forward to, um, participating in appointing a. You know, a school building committee that'll, that'll maximize the value to our community, so this is very, very good, thank you.
Thanks Matt. I agree with you, the more information we can give our townspeople that is concrete, the better. I think also we do all need to understand that things, some things are, are going to fluctuate. Some things we don't know, some things we won't be able to know, some things we are going to have to guess on, and so. That is also important to be very clear with the citizens, that that is the state of the situation. And we can't always manage every bit unfortunately, so we will give as much as we can, we'll try to keep the information as clear. And concise as possible, um, and then just make sure to. Um, and then just make sure to see when things are. Um, gonna, actual numbers are gonna have to wait a few minutes or wait a while till we can get the the best estimate possible. Okay, is there anybody else there for present to speak or in the room?
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Miss Des, on West Black Road. I uh, just wanted to ask, it's something that you said, Bree, that I just wanted to hook up on. Is it possible that the pre-K? Um, student growth in this scenario might put us up closer to the four thirties or beyond that? And is, can you factor that in knowing that, of course, if you build it up? It's uh, it's what, can you capture that number in some way as a part of the process or the application?
I would guess based on my own professional experience, I would add about twenty kids. Give or take, two sessions.
See, I expect them, uh, do you know that, I'm not that, but the uh, enrollment projection, does it, is it K? Or is pre-K? And so. I have to assume that it's in that already. It impacts our enrollment today because we're only taking fours. Because of space at center school. If we took threes, our actual enrollment may go up today. But the projection already probably has that in if I'm. Saying that right.
Yeah, we should look at the enrollment projection because it's it's an older projection.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so maybe that's something we can get an update on it. Cause if if. We can get a higher number. Just for even for the reimbursement, you know, that's what you want.
And the other thing is just uh, something Phil asked, uh, that I I'm on the Board of Finance. We haven't received any information about the September fourth meeting as of yet.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Hi, Mr. Marshall, from General Road. I just want to start by, I'm also the chairman of the CFP community in town, um, and about very talented first school. I just want to start by thanking Rusty and Steve um, for the information. They were very informative about this question that you all touched on. Throughout the conversation, so it was great. Um. Couple of quick questions that I did want to ask, will we have here? Um. Have you had any luck recently at the town under the process of the last one on the committee? Uh, the OPM at the time had said yes, that he had recent success. Um, getting higher general reimbursement rate. Um. For schools, for for new school projects. Have you had, um? I guess I want to get your insight, thoughts on whether you've had success recently and potentially pursuing that, um, you know, and how that went back there and there.
There is, uh, what you have to do is demonstrate that the difference between, there's a. A tangible difference between a renovation and 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 the new. And even if the new is slightly more expensive, the impact on education is so significant. And that again goes back to the Commission of Education to say, yes, it makes sense to do a new school, but there have been. Not on one of my projects, because that didn't come up, but I I know of many projects that that uh, that took place.
That usually falls along the same schedule or or degrees certainty as a space waiver.
Yes.
Lines. Um, so if we come to.
That pre-reading to the application is where that discussion would occur.
Um, and we have a good argument.
Right.
Can you also speak a little bit to option three? I mean, um, ultimately it's more of a, I think it's great, it's more of a plus fourth government and option to any future school in the committee. Particularly a little bit of timeline and sensitivity to that. Um. But can you talk a little bit about option three being it is being it being a substantial ad round project, what the potential impact or. It costs are one factor of this, but from a community and myself and two kids in schools, um, understanding what the potential applications are and impact to education throughout this process. Um, is also a big factor in my mind. Um. So.
Then last slide, we had uh, identified the disruption, maybe. What I would call. A moderate to high level disruption, only because your site is very tight to begin with. So where we're building that building is in the parking lot. So it's gonna impact circulation and pickup and drop off, et cetera. Uh, there's gonna have to be separation between construction. I mean, what we've done is. Created a a a zone where you can separate the construction so there's no impact directly on the school. Um, and we've done this successfully in many cases. Um. But, you know, there's, there always is disruption. I think that's just the reality of it. You've got a construction, the government work is coming on site, you've got. Parts delivering things and that transition between the new and the existing, at some point you have to address that. So. It's it's something that you would need to go into with your eyes open and know that there's going to be. Something's gonna go wrong. I mean, there's just, you know, much as you try and and, you know, make it so that nothing will go wrong. Somebody will will do something, uh, because you're dealing with hundreds of people on the site, contractors, et cetera. And and you know, it's just. The nature of things, that something could happen that could disrupt dedication. It's how you handle it at that time. You know, and so with, you know, anticipating in a project like that, you would work with the construction manager. Assistant and they would have people on site all the time. Uh, you know. Design team is always, you know, we're more vigilant at that point because we've got to make sure that the. That that whole phasing is worked out in in a lot of detail. To minimize disruption, but I would never tell you that there will be no disruption because. You know, we're doing right now a school, which is a brand new school on an existing site, and it's fenced in. Uh, I mean, that's a slightly different scenario because we we have lots of land to be able to do that and and create the separation between the schools. We did a, we just finished up a high school where we actually dismantled part of the school, built a wing and then dismantled the second part. So, but in high school, we're now talking about elementary school kids and I, you know, that's a higher level of diligent settings to occur.
Um, and just to that end, um. Well, I think it's, um. I I know the timeframe is inevitably gonna feel like it goes away in a heartbeat. Um. I know you guys are gonna make a decision ultimately that you feel is in the best interest of the community, and that's great. Um, I would encourage you to get as much input or provide opportunity for input before that decision is made. And advance to a school building committee. I know that's hard to get sometimes, and saying full, I understand that we've had two years of discussions already. I still think these are weedy decisions that, um. The opportunity should be offered, um, to the greatest extent you can as quickly as we can, so, um. It's great. Thank you guys for your efforts.
A survey?
That's not deep, that's real feedback.
Hi. I had a question. Um, Sarah Smith, Eldridge Road. Um. I imagine that the site has been looked at. I'm concerned about things like. Uh, the water supply, uh, you know, are we on wells or what's going on with that? Um, also. Uh, any kinds of uh. Pollutants and so forth. I'm also concerned about. Uh, the building is like a hundred years old. What about the foundations? Can you get in there? Maybe, of course, there's asbestos that has been dated so far, but. I'm wondering if, um, at this point. You have ideas that this is. Definitely something pursuable and will work out because. Um, I am, I am a little concerned about water. Particularly and and what you're gonna find and give underneath that infrastructure.
And you're sorry, talking specifically about the current hall site.
Yes.
So we did have. Last time we did the evaluation, we did have a structural engineers look at the building. The building is not. Gonna fall down or anything, so it's it's in good shape. And I mean, many times I think of the buildings that were built. No, you're on, I've heard, you know, they're. It's sort of over engineered them in many ways. But having said that, I mean, there is hazmat and we have decided for the removal of hazmat, and that's always an issue. Uh, so that has to be totally removed from the project. I mean, utility wise and water supply wise, we, I, you know, I would have to go back to the report and look at what we discovered at the time. And I mean, the school is there, there's magnetic water. Um, so I don't think the utilities would be an issue uh, on on that that building. Um. And I'm sure I, if I refresh my memory and look at read the report again, I'll be able to confront that too.
I don't think the whole school site has any issues. They're not on well. It's currently on on water. Uh, both buildings actually are are on, not well. So from a standpoint of both locations. Even though we wouldn't do anything in center, they're both actually in good position from. Anything we'd be talking about for, you know, wells or electric.
Thank you.
Yes, me.
Michelle DeSec, coming in, forty-one Wisker Road. I'm pleased that you're gonna look at the ed specs first because I think that's a really important conversation. If our goal is to provide the right facility, help our students learn, you need to start with what kind of space do they need to learn? So that's the right place to start. Um, I do want to mention that when those ed specs were created, the original number we started with was a lot closer to a hundred thousand square feet. And we got it down to the seventy-two, but we cut out a lot of things that we wanted. It was not our wish list to get it seventy-two. Seventy-two was the. Uh, I guess we could live with that number. So the thought that you've gotten it down to sixty. Makes my hair stand on end that you're gonna have, you know, t- teachers swapping classrooms and we're gonna have some classrooms that are much bigger than we want. Getting people on carts, you know, carts and, you know, art's gonna be done in the classrooms because they're not gonna have enough space to have. You know, as many, right now we have two art rooms that are fully used. So if you only have one art room that's fully used, you have somebody on a cart using things, you know. So I just want you to really dive deep into those ed specs because, um, the sixty thousand number. I cannot imagine what you're giving up. It must be. Worse than bare bones. So I I trust that you know your job, but you know, the seventy-two was not what I wanted. So I'm just saying, that was a, that was a difficult conversation and we had a lot, we went down and then. Uh, Herb Erica was like, I want auditorium, and he said, no, give us two options and added it back up to the eighty-three for the auditorium. So. You know, it's it's definitely a conversation worth having in terms of, um. What space do the students need to learn? Are you okay with half of the art happening on a cart in regular classrooms? That's that's the the work of the board is to really think about what are the programmatic implications of space limitations? It would be a shame to build a new building with a huge amount of state support. Because we're too cheap to pay for enough storage. People have got stuff on carts and we're tripping over stuff in the hallways. Cause we don't have enough storage space because we needed more space for classrooms. So I just want you to think. About what the students and the staff need to provide the education that you want.
We were on that school board together. It's been a long road.
With that reminder.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir, back to you.
Uh, so this is actually a question, if you recall, it's all, um, the agreement with the Hall Foundation on the use of the property. Is that property related or is that building related? I can't recall off the top of my head, and I just.
It's building that you, it it's almost, it's used as a school.
As long as the building is used as a school, so.
And and I know that Kate, the.
John's comment then.
Yeah, to to and to John T. Head's comment about, um. Doing something on that site. I think that was something that, um, the School Building Committee could do as well, is that if there is going to be. If there's no new school on a new site and it comes down to the Hall School site, I think you'd have to. Update the legal language, the deed language, take ownership. I'm sure they would say, you cannot, we'll we'll give you everything. You can't tear down Hall School. You have to do this, this, and this, and. But that would be all legal language, and I think it's something they'd be willing to do to have that conversation. That didn't happen the first time. Um. But I don't think it's out of the question by any means. They want to see that building, uh, shine. Uh, the Hall Foundation does. I don't think that's that's a surprise. I think the community does as well. Um. I think that their feedback in that process of what shine looks like, if there's. You know, you're taking off a wing of that building and you're restoring it back to what, and actually originally it looked like. It was a grand entrance on the west side of the building as well. It was one on actually each side of the building except for the back. Um, so. That's something I think could be considered in the planning if it was a, uh, uh. If it was a new on new site, that would be part of the conversation.
For me, it's more of a gut check validation that, um. It's an achievable option, um, particularly as you're making a decision or winning out options from three to one and whether it be a new school or a site. Or whether the ability to reuse the whole site in a different configuration like that is is allowable before you. I want to, you know, one of, one of, um, I I just think it's a piece of the institution.
Yeah, and I can, that's something I could do. I could reach out. I'm not sure who the president of the, um, Hall Foundation is right now. Uh, but I can reach out to find out if these people want to have a conversation and say, okay. Is this even an option? If it's, if it's not an option in in that term, two people off and their whole school site option might be, uh, not so good option either.
Um. Phil, I believe it's Christine. Sorry to cut you off. I believe it's Christine over at the water. Is the president of the Hall Foundation.
Furphy? Is that a furphy?
Furphy? I don't understand.
It's Christine's last name.
Yes. Uh, I don't know. I was trying to search my email, but I don't have good signal.
You're perfect. Maybe she. I think you're right. I need to get a second.
Okay, so yeah, the School Building Committee did speak with members of the Hall Foundation last time, but there were no updates or changes to the deed and nothing specific, I think, was determined, which is why I think Mike is raising his hand.
Yes, that is true. Um, I did have multiple conversations with representatives of the Hall Foundation last time. Uh, Ralph Tullis also was in one or two of those conversations. The reason it didn't become public at the time, which actually is another lesson learned from last time. Um, people from the community were concerned that the Hall Family was not part of the conversation because they weren't attending the public meetings. Because there was no official report, and some people even took it upon themselves to make up. Um, concerns or conspiracy theories that they were upset about it or that it was somehow going to. Um, rip off the Hall Foundation. The fact of the matter is they were in conversations. As I said, I had multiple. Conversation with them, but they specifically at the time said. They would not participate in a public meeting for the simple reason they wanted the townspeople to make their decision without influence from the Hall Foundation. And specifically, if the townspeople felt a different location was prudent. They didn't want to influence that decision-making process. They would then be happy to meet with us in an official capacity once the referendum. Passed, if it were to pass, and they would either participate in the conversation about how we continue to use Hall School. Or how we leave Hall School, depending on what the taxpayers decided at the time to do. I cannot speak for those conversations now because that was a couple of years ago, of course. I believe they would still be amenable. Uh, Christine Stetson is a contact. Um, there are other contacts with the Hall Foundation also, but Christine's probably the right place to start.
Like, was she in those meetings?
She was not at the time. Alice was still the primary contact at that time.
Yeah.
So I I just wanted to give that historical information. The, they were willing to have multiple conversation, or I'm not saying multiple, they were willing to have. Conversation about multiple different options, whether it was using it, not using it, what happens next to it, if we do. Abandon it, what would they like to get out of it? Would they consider modifications to the deed agreement? Um, and for clarity, the title is in the town's name. It is our building, it is our land, except it has a clause in it that it reverts, a reversion clause. So I just want to make sure that technical difference is understood. We do own it. Thank you.
It's so great that we've already got so many answers to these questions. Well. Okay, anybody else for, um, presence? No. All right. Then I will see everybody next week on Tuesday for our. Regular meeting and then on September fourth to continue talking about this particular topic with the other boards and groups. All right. Would anyone like to move forward and that's. I'm moving.
Second.
Thanks, John. Alan Feber? Samry there?
Yes, hi.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We did zoom this. Thank you. We have during eight forty-one. Thank you, everybody, for your participation.